Good evening. I'll call this meeting of the Carlsland City Council to order. If you'll please stand for invocation and pledge.
Let us pray. Father God, we give you thanks for the freedom that the citizens have to choose their representatives, and for those who have sacrificed to maintain these freedoms for us. God, as since we exercise this privilege to act for the best interest of all the citizens of this community, it is in your holy name that we pray. Amen.
Do you want me to pledge?
Pledge.
United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, God, and in this little liberty and justice for all.
Just give him the roll, please.
Carrie Hodges, Ward 1. Jayce Step, Ward 2.
Here.
Louis Tonsmire, Ward 3.
Here.
Lindsay McDaniel, Ward 4.
Yes.
Diane Tate, Ward 5.
Here.
Lori Pruitt, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you. Connie, first order of business is the approval of our meeting minutes from the October 6th meeting. Council, you've had these well in advance of tonight. Chair, want to attain any edits, corrections, or motions?
Mayor didn't see any corrections or additions, make a motion to approve.
Okay. All in favor, you can say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. We have a resolution to start things off tonight. Mr. Manino.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Actually, we need to open it as a public hearing for the capital improvements element.
I'll do that once you recognize what we're doing.
This is a capital improvements element annual update to our comprehensive plan. This is required because the city has an active impact fee ordinance. And with that, we go through this exercise annually. If you...
You'd like me to do what?
If you would open it up as a public hearing, or do we not need to do that at this time?
No, I will. Now that you've told everybody what we're doing, I'm going to... So this is an opportunity for everybody to step forward and speak relative to this topic, correct?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Manino. And I'm sorry, at the same time, I will now open up a public hearing for anybody to comment on the approval of the capital improvements element annual update and the corresponding transmittal resolution. Anybody wishing to speak on that topic may step forward and do so at this time.
I'll provide a little bit of additional information. The document's virtually the exact document you approved in January. The draft is resubmitted to them annually, and we will get feedback, and it'll come back before you again in January with additional changes as I collect additional data from the different departments. So right now, what is being transmitted is exactly what you approved in January.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Manino as part of this public hearing? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have a question. When, I think we did this impact fees first time, the last quarter of 2006, is that right, starting in 2007?
Sounds right.
When was the last time we collected impact fees?
It's been at least four years since we've collected impact fees. However, the ordinance is still on the books, so we still have an impact fee, but it's zero right now with the economy. When it went down, we made those adjustments to the fee schedule. Instead of having to go back through the entire exercise of re-adopting a new ordinance, we did it that way. And then if the economy does take off, council does have the option to manipulate or change those fees.
Yeah, I kind of thought about this relative to the price that you may be into by trying to re-implement the thing. If you go back through the study and all that, this is small cost compared to that, I would guess, right, Randy?
That is correct.
I think it was around '09, because we did talk about the cost of just rolling them back to zero versus eliminating them and then putting them back in place. But basically, we've got the infrastructure for impact fees in place. Shouldn't we ever decide this?
We would just have to re-establish fees and do an analysis to re-establish those fees, other than going back through the entire process again.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on this topic may step forward and do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for the capital improvements elements annual update, and we'll turn it over to council. A motion, if one were to be forthcoming, would be relative to the transmittal of the resolution.
No move.
Second.
All in favor, you can say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We have health insurance renewal for 2015. Mr. Porter.
Yes, Mayor and council. This year, for going into 2015, it's on a calendar year basis for health insurance. We've been dealing with the health insurance broker, Scott Hankins. His firm has looked at several companies, Blue Cross Blue Shield, United Healthcare, and Humana declined to give us a competitive quote. As Aetna, as the only other insurance company, provided a rate quote for us, and that was higher than the Cigna increase. The Cigna increase is just under 14 percent, which should be passed on to the city employees at same level. It's actually 13.8 percent. Couple of things that are driving that, some of that was shared with you prior to the meeting, is also in your handout. This slide shows where our claims and medical and RX claims have been. The last two columns are the current. 2013, we had 3.2 million in claims dollars spent. And then in 2014 through September, we're already at 2.8 million in claims dollars. So by the end of the calendar year, I fully anticipate that claims expense to be in the neighborhood of 3.2 or 3.3 million dollars in claims dollars. The next slide will give you a little breakdown, providing of the kind of the medical and RX claims for 2014. The one thing that's kind of alarming here that we've looked at is the last two months. The top bar on there is the RX cost, the prescription drugs. We've been averaging about $40,000 per month in RX claims. In August, it was 78,000, and September was $60,000. So those prescription drugs, for some reason, and I'm not sure, we don't have our October numbers yet. I'm not sure if that's just anomaly for those two months, or if we're seeing a trend increase in prescription drug costs. But claims are a big factor in what drives premium. The next sheet there that handout is basically what the employees will see if the city council approves the proposed Cigna rate increase of the 13.8 percent without any adjustments. A single employee currently pays $50 per pay period to go up to 56.88. Employee plus one dependent or employee spouse currently pays 162 per pay period to go up to 184.28. Family coverage, if you've got a full family coverage, is 177 and go to 201.34. That's again on a bi-weekly pay period amount. That's what the employees would see. And then the far right column kind of gives you what the retirees that pay a monthly premium, what the monthly premium number would look like. That's again without any potential changes that were discussed at the work session. And the last spreadsheet kind of gives you a synopsis of where, you know, the first two columns going to give you the Cigna, and I know I gave you handouts, easier to read. The 2014, what we looked at, the total fixed and variable costs were at 4.5 million. The second column is the proposed increase at just at 5 million. Then there's some options that Mr. Hankins can share additional information, but we've discussed previously at the work session, it's up to city council if you want to make some additional changes to that. You know, I just threw up some options on there. The specialty RX copay, which is the top tier, currently employees pay $60 for that prescription drug, would go to 10 percent of that prescription drug cost, up to a maximum of $200, what the employee would see as a copay. Depends on the cost of that drug. Some of those drugs cost several thousand dollars, so employee would pay 10 percent up to a $200 max. That's one of the trends if, and I've read this in industry magazines, it basically is one of the cost factors that are rising. So that would, that one change would be a .1 percent change in decrement cost of, overall would be a savings of $3,700, but that's just one option on the table. You got to increase the emergency room copay from 100, 200 would be savings about just under $15,000 to the overall plan. And then there's some other, the other option is the increase, the emergency room copay is 200, the specialty RX copay, which I just mentioned, the 10 percent up to $200 max. And the increase in the prescription deductible increase currently at $50 would go to $100 is one option. That's total savings would be 33,700. Those are just some options. One of the other items we discussed is the health reimbursement account. Employees currently have the ability to get up to $1,500 of the $3,000 deductible, per employee deductible reimbursed. That is going away because it's not being able to be funded in 2015. So that's going to be a hit to the employees already going into next year. So they'll have to pay the entire deductible and co-insurance up to, you know, a worst-case scenario, up to $5,000 out-of-pocket is what they have to pay if they had a worst-case scenario, going into hospital, have a major medical done. I can answer additional questions that you may have, or Scott Hankins is here to ask you, or you can answer, you can answer questions about our overall coverage as well.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have a question, something I missed in the work session. Under retirees' monthly deduction, that says monthly premium. Under city employees, what we're looking at is per pay period. Is that correct?
Correct. We're 26 pay periods, so it's averaged that way. It's the same dollar amount. They just, retirees paid on a monthly basis, and employees paid on a bi-weekly basis.
But I mean, the premium I'm looking at would be double that if it's per pay period a month.
It's approximately, again, it's a 26 pay period a year. It's the same, same exact dollar amount that they both pay, same exact rate, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this item, or any other discussion that needs to be had? I know that there were a number of options that were discussed in the work session, and this is y'all's, council's opportunity to...
Well, Dan, I'll make, just, well, I have a question and a comment, but the last few years, have we met our aggregate? Have we gotten to our aggregate max?
On our claims aggregate, last year, we exceeded that amount. The prior year, I don't recall if we, actually based on the spreadsheet, I would say, yes, we exceeded that amount. It's been about three years ago since we probably did not hit that aggregate.
And these numbers that you're showing here are the maximums?
The spreadsheet, the one I, basically, that you're seeing, the best thing would be the last page of the handout I gave you. It shows, it breaks it down, the fixed cost, the stop-loss premium, yes, that sheet right there, and the claims liability. The claims liability for 2014 is 3.3, 3,51,568. It's going to 3.7 million, and basically, there's some minor adjustment spending on what we make changes to.
One of the things I did not notice in the work session was the anticipated potential savings for making any other changes to the healthcare plan, which are not as significant as I thought they might be. So the change in the RX copay, we're looking at $3,700. A change in the ER copay, maybe 15,000-ish, and both of them combined 34,000. So it's not a huge impact to the city budget, but it could be a huge impact to employees who are already losing the health reimbursement account.
We would not do it to save cost. We would do it so that it would cut into the loss.
Is there a way to accomplish that through education of our employees rather than such a direct impact when we're already making this change?
We could certainly try that. We could certainly try that. I am at a loss for explaining as we talked earlier, why people would prefer the emergency room as opposed to their primary care physician.
Right.
But Lori, you got to look at it. It's not, this isn't your fully insured shelf product type insurance, where you would walk in and say, let's say you're online, looking up at Blue Cross Blue Shield, and the difference between a $500 deductible and a $1,000 deductible. Obviously, you'd see a direct correlation in premium. Here, you're not seeing that. It's self-insured. So it's claims dollars that we pay. The first hundred thousand dollars of every claim comes directly out of the city's pocket. What they're doing here is you're seeing, the reason I asked Dan the question, how many times have we met our aggregate max, which is that total number. If you see, the current number is 4.5 million. The next number over the renewal is going to 5 million. These others, they just go down slightly because of the aggregate max. The end result of these changes would hopefully have a deeper savings than that.
In what way?
Because, I mean, to go ahead and just be as upfront with you, is when an employee goes to the emergency room, instead of only paying $100, they would pay 200, which would be $100 off of our claims liability that we wouldn't pay as a citizen.
I guess I'm just a little concerned. I mean, when we first talked about it, it seemed as though trying to encourage responsible control of our own healthcare choices was a smart thing. And so using your primary care physician instead of the ER, and using generic drugs instead of specialty drugs if they work. But it seems like we're making a lot of other changes, especially with the health reimbursement account being taken away. So I don't know that, I mean, if it's 33,000, I mean, if it's 33,000, that doesn't seem like a lot. If it's a million 33,000, then that seems like that would be an appropriate incentive and worth the change. I can't get a feel for...
That isn't why we would do it. We wouldn't do it to save on the premium.
And it would be to save overall, but how much are we talking about?
It would be to cut into loss. I don't...
At a minimum, you're talking 33,000.
But we're talking $100 times 119 visits, right?
Right. That's what's been over the past 12 months, is 119, so 11,900.
11,900.
11,900?
Right.
So that's 43, 44,000. I don't know. I'm struggling with what to do here on this one.
Well, just to address Jace's topic, this is actually a minimum premium arrangement that we have through Cigna. So we're not, if we save any dollars, it's basically Cigna saving the money, because we're not a self-insured. We did away with that a couple of years ago when we left United Healthcare. So basically, if there's money saved in the claims account, they keep the money. If there's, we go over like we're going over this year, they're basically paying anything above 100 percent of that amount, just for clarification.
We're not self-insured at all?
Not, not under this, this plan. We went away when we bid out a couple of years ago. It was less expensive for us to go with United or for Cigna.
Hit the max, you wouldn't want to be.
Yeah.
But we haven't hit the max.
Yeah, we have.
Well, we have. Last, last year, we hit the max. Being that was the first year when we got the renewal, originally came in 8 percent. I got them down to 4 percent this year. Like I said, I was surprised that came in, the rate increase they had. The way the claims are going, it should be trending higher.
But you're, you're exactly right. I mean, you can, you can renew it as it is with the couple of blows and just try to educate, you know, that, you know, try to...
Our decision-making process, maybe?
I got a question relative to part of the presentation where you mentioned where there were a number of folks who either chose, or just, where you say they, or other carriers declined to quote or did not provide one because they were, they were uncompetitive. Is that, is that, did they respond to us and said, "We can't beat that, and we're not getting back"? Or did they just kind of feel, or did we just not get a response, and that's...
Scott Hankins can address that. I saw the letters. I mean, he may be able to address that one a little better.
Scott, if you would. And for our clerk, just your name and your, and your address.
Scott Hankins, Shaw Hankins, 9 Barto Street.
Thank you.
Good to see everybody. But we send out quotes every year on every line of coverage for every one of our clients, and then we get back either a proposal or a declination letter. Given the circumstances and the fact that you have a relatively low aggregate maximum, very few people put in a proposal. And I think Aetna was the only one, and it was 14 percent, and it gets kind of complicated. But their proposal was a contract that was not as comprehensive. It was a 12-12 instead of a minimum premium. But we, there is no other insurance carrier to look at. If I could weigh in on the other questions, if you'd had a great year, I would still recommend the specialty drugs. You are, you've had a great year in terms of specialty drugs, in that you've only got one person on specialty drugs. You've somehow avoided that. It won't happen next year. So that, I see, is really irrelevant to the cost savings. That is a preventative measure, because a lot of medications that aren't the high-cost injectables like Humira and Embrel have another alternative. And so someone might be more likely to try another alternative before just taking whatever the doctor says, because it's $60. Does that make sense?
It does.
Emergency room also can be somewhat of a deterrent besides the cost savings involved. If I were to recommend something, I'd say definitely do the specialty drugs, and, you know, consider the ER. You're right, with the $1,500 HRA, that's a lot for one year. The $50 increase on the drug card, though, is, the 15, the HRA puts the out-of-pocket expenses back on the ones that are using it the most. The specialty drugs put the out-of-pocket expenses back on the ones that are using it the most. Emergency room does the same thing. $50 on everybody for their drug card, that, you're spreading it out over everybody. Does that make sense? So I, I don't personally recommend that one. Love to answer.
Any other questions?
Is that prescription drug deductible only on tier two and tier three drugs, or is that across the board?
It's everything but one. Everything but...
Generics.
Okay. The generics are where most of your prescriptions are. That is true.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Any other discussion? We could certainly talk this out. It doesn't necessarily have to be in a form of a motion, but...
Well, it makes, okay, it makes sense to me on the specialty copay. I think that makes sense. I'm still struggling with the emergency room piece of it. And I tend to like your recommendation, Mr. Hankins, about the RX deductible increase spread over, but probably not. Since we're making so many increases and getting rid of the HRA, that's just one more thing that's really a struggle for people to deal with, because most people have some prescriptions at some point in the year.
Does anybody else have a thought on that?
Lori, let me make sure I understand. You have a problem with the increase of the emergency room copay?
I'm not totally comfortable, only because we are increasing the premiums that people are going to have to pay out-of-pocket, and we're getting, getting rid of what was help in meeting a pretty high deductible of $3,000. It seems as though we've only had less than 120 people actually go to the emergency room, so that doesn't seem excessively skewed. And if somebody needs to go to the, you know, if we could handle through education, go when you really need to go, it would be nice if they could go for $100. I don't know that they're flippantly going to the emergency room, but if you're already getting an increase in your premium, and you're losing your HRA, and it's 3 o'clock in the morning, and you've got something really bad wrong with you, and it's $200 instead of $100, and you don't go, I would like them to feel like they could go ahead and go to the emergency room when the circumstances warranted it. That's just my thought.
Jace, how is that spread across the premium?
In regards to...
200 to 100 ER.
What's right, it's the second option. It's about $11,000 of savings on the maximum.
I'm sorry, Jace, I don't see that.
If you see the, on, that's up here, which obviously you, I'm obviously getting old now, because I can't see.
Yeah, it's now... It's the fifth column over. It says increase ER copay to $200.
You should have seen that when I first got on council now.
When I first started coming, that is in heaven.
That's don't happen.
Diane, do you see it now?
Yes, I do.
Of these three options, it's the, it's the next level up.
I got you. Thank you.
It's the middle of the three.
I got you.
So Lori, if I've heard you correctly, the, the copay, the 10 percent up to 200 percent max, you seem comfortable with that.
I do.
And then the third option was, basically, if we backed out the increase in the ER, you had columns one and three, with the exception that you take away two.
Well, no, you got, you got three options going on here.
The prescription deductible increase of $50 across the board, which I think we should do that.
Well, and understand this, guys, that's not a true $50 deductible. And the reason being is, when you go to get a prescription, you're going to pay a copay regardless. So I don't know what our plan is. I don't know what our copay structure is. But if your, if your copay was 30 bucks, right now, for that first drug, you're going to pay $50. So it wasn't a $50 deductible. It was only really a $20 deductible. So...
Increase, right.
So that's the reason I, you know, that's not a huge bugaboo to the, to the employees on that, because really, they would have paid a copay regardless.
Like, it might be. I mean, if you're paying 30 now, and you go, you've got something you have to get every month, and suddenly it's 50, that's 240 dollars.
Well, 50 is already there.
Well, if you're paying, your copay now happens, I'm using this example. You're paying 30 now every month for whatever it is you get. Now, you're going to have to pay 50 every month for whatever it is you get. That's a $20 increase.
For two months. Then it goes to the copay.
True, true.
So that $100 deductible was really only a $40 deductible. I'm going to do this. I'm going to make a motion, and then we can...
Well, so the way we'll do this, obviously, we get into a conference, we'll have a motion, we'll have a second, we'll have an opportunity for further discussion, and then we'll do a visible vote. So go ahead, council.
With all that's been said, I'm going to make a motion to approve, you know, the, the renewal of the Cigna policy, leaving the prescription drug, well, leaving the emergency room at $100, making the prescription drug changes across the board with the deductible increase and the tier four. On top of that, we would be offering a gap policy from all state to help the employees out that feel as though that they might have that $1,500 deductible increase. That make sense, everybody?
Just for clarification, that voluntary, the gap product is voluntary?
Gap policy, voluntary of employees. Sorry. Yep, thank you.
Okay. So we have a very well-constructed motion. Would anybody care to second that motion?
I love it.
He wants to do the RX deductible and the specialty RX increase, and not the ER increase. So all the drug increases, but not the ER deduct, ER deductible increase.
And I, I mean, I don't know if I can make a comment. Can I make a comment after I made that motion, or do I have to wait?
Anything that moves the ball down.
I think that's illegal.
Can he comment after he's made a legal, or do I need to wait to see if there's a second?
No, legally, he could go ahead and make a comment.
Okay. The reason I make that comment is because of the last couple of months going through the claims, prescriptions seem to get, are getting up there. And, you know, anything we can do to soften that blow on the claim side is, I think, is needed.
With the thought that if you soften the blow on the claim side, then the ultimate cost will come, will stay under control so that we don't have another big increase following you.
In other words, you're already looking at 2016.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's the motion and the comment attached to it. So we have a motion on the table. Everybody's had a chance to kind of let that sink in. Does anybody care to second it?
Lori, what is your problem with that motion?
I really don't want, I don't want the, I don't want the RX deductible increase at all, general across the board, because they're already paying more for their insurance. They're already losing the HRA, and they're going to pay more for drugs. I just, I don't think that the ultimate bottom line, given the percentage in the whole picture, and the percentage of the whole budget of the city, that is really one that we should do. I think we should do the specialty RX copay, the column one.
It's actually a motion on the floor.
Yeah, well, we're...
She asked me a question.
Yeah, but I asked, it may be illegal, but I asked a question.
And that's, that would be all. You still have a second on the motion, so trying to figure out if she wants a second.
So now that we've had, remember, when I first said this, we're going to have a motion, a second, and then a discussion.
We didn't get a second.
But again, I think one of the things that makes this kind of work the way that it does, is we can be a little bit open-form to get, hopefully, what is the right decision, the best decision. So we can free-form this a little bit, and we all respect each other, so it's not that big an issue. I am going to call, however, Jace, council... I am going to call, however, Jace, Councilman Stepp does have a motion on the floor, and we've had a couple, little conversation. Does anybody want to second his motion? And seeing nobody second the motion, I'm going to say that that motion dies for lack of a second, and now there's an opportunity for further discussion, or probably more appropriately, an alternative motion.
I'll make an alternative motion, that we approve the bid from Cigna Healthcare with the change to the specialty RX copay for the 10% up to $200 max, and that would be the only additional change that we make.
Stop, Kay.
We don't have to include that in the motion, do we?
Yeah, you need...
The gap premium, because we talked about that in work session.
Well, it's another product that'd be offered to the employees, and typically you have approved that Allstate would...
Is the option to offer a...
Allstate gap product.
Allstate gap filler.
Voluntary.
That is voluntary and not required.
So if you're looking at the spreadsheet, what we're looking at is column, basically column one and nothing out of column, well, again, by saying that, that you want to take that out of column one, you're saying no increase to the...
ER copay.
To the ER copay and the $50...
Or the RX deductible.
Okay. Just so everybody understands, that's what we're talking about in this motion, and it does include the voluntary gap policy.
Yes.
To be offered to employees. That is the motion that is on the table. Does anybody care to second that motion?
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion on this item? Okay, that being said, if you will raise your right hand and say aye if you were in favor of that motion.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, next item is asset management software renewal. Mr. Jones.
Good evening, everyone. I'll hopefully make this one a little less controversial. This is, this is our annual software...
We're going to try to, go ahead.
Pick me apart. This is our annual software renewal licensing fee. It's software that we use for asset management, we've had it for several years. It's a budgeted item, it would be a payment to Sims Technologies for $7,545, and that does include our tech support and training for a full year.
Okay. Questions on this item? Thank you. Chair, want to take a motion?
I guess you should approve.
Look at us all now.
And Lori, second to that? All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Anderson, you've got the next few.
Yes, sir, mayor and council. This is an agreement with Etowah Valley Consolidated Housing Authority. This is for doing work at the Matthew Hill Park, repairing the electrical supply there and adding some electrical outlets. The housing authority is, took bids and will be overseeing the project. Our part is just paying half the bill, which would be $3,375, and I recommend approval of this agreement.
Any questions, comments, or motions?
We should approve this agreement.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next one, please, Greg.
Yes, sir. This is to replace the Otter Barn, the lake fountain at Dillinger Lake. It went out in August, and it is not repairable. It has been rewound twice, and it's not repairable this time. I got three quotes, and recommend the low quote from Atlantic Fountains in the amount of $7,038.88.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, Greg.
And the next one is for the replastering of the Senior Aquatic Center pool. This pool opened in December of '06, and the, and the plastering is worn off the bottom and needs to be, it needs to be replastered. It also takes into account some cracks we have on the deck to repair those, repair a leak we have in the field line, and then do a pressure test on our skimmers. It also calls for the removal of the lane tiles and target tiles in the pool, which we have inspected those, and we're, we think that those are okay and do not need replacing. That being said, I would like to recommend that we accept the low bid from Aquatic Consoling and Equipment in the amount not to exceed $13,240, but I do expect the price to come in at $11,300. We have all documentation, and that's my recommendation.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Anderson on this item? And if not a motion, it's an order.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You're saying that your low bid is $13,240?
Yes, sir.
You're going to do some negotiating to get down to 11,300?
Well, I sent out an addendum, a different, for a different proposal form, that included a price that took out the replacement of the tiles, the lane tiles and the lane targets. And if those are good, those won't need to be replaced.
Nelson, go ahead, everyone.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good. Mr. Hasselbrot.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. The electric department comes before you tonight asking you to, we're in need of a spare 2,500 KVA transformer. We've had to use our spare on, we had a leaking transformer in the field, and we took it out of service, and we shipped it back to Florida Transformer who does our rehab work to see if it could be, the one that came out of service, if it could be salvaged. And they said it could with a cost of $9,718.80. A new transformer would be $33,000, and we budgeted, we budgeted for that in our budget, but we, we're asking that we have the transformer fixed instead of purchasing a new one. And it comes with a three-year warranty, so we're satisfied with that. And Florida Transformer, who has been doing our repair work for 15 years, we, we know their, we know their quality of work, and we're satisfied with that. So we're asking the council to approve the expenditure of $9,718.80 for the repair of this transformer.
You're asking permission to save about $23,000?
I am.
Any questions?
I keep asking you, but the warranty, on both of these, the $9,000 plus the buying a new one, that's $33,000, what would be the warranty for each, if you decide?
It's about the same. In fact, I think a new one's probably not, I doubt you get a three-year warranty on it, but...
Out of a new one?
Right.
That we can get a three-year warranty out of the repair?
Yes, sir.
That's the deal.
Don, I had a question.
Sure.
I noticed somewhere on the bid here, what do you do? Do you send, do you send it to them, and then if they can't repair it, it just becomes recyclable? Is that, is that what it's...
We will scrap it, we will scrap it, and they will, they will give you about, you'll get about $750 worth.
So they don't send it back to you?
No, ma'am.
They just scrap it?
It's not worth it, it wouldn't be worth it to us to get it back if it's not reusable.
Well, that was interesting. I'd just never seen that kind of codicil on something that you send it to them, it can't be repaired, it belongs to them, I mean...
Well, we'll sell it to them. It still belongs to us, but we sell it to them as a scrap, basically. They scrap it for us.
Thank you.
All right, we got a mo, any...
Motion to approve.
Yes, second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Ms. Boelander.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is for the printing and the postage for the 2015 calendar. We have received two bids from local printers, and I am recommending we go with the low bid, New Dimension, for a total of $9,325.01.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Bob, you're up again, yeah.
I've got another softball for you here. The water department would like to buy some water meters. Specifically, we need to restock. We always do this prior to cold weather. We have a few casualties during the cold weather, meter lids get knocked off, broken, what have you. Cold air freezes them, so we stock up prior to that. The total group of meters that we are buying would be largely residential. There are some industrial meters that just need to be changed out because of age, and the total package cost is $16,507, and that would be from Delta Municipal, and that's a budgeted item.
Thank you. Any discussion, if not a motion, it's an order.
Just a question. Was this, was this bid out, or did you just go straight to Delta?
It is, it is bid, but there is one Neptune meter distributor for Georgia, so it's, you know, it's their price or nothing.
Gotcha. Much to approve of.
Here we go.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Dan, yeah, Mr. Porter's got the next one, please.
Yes, mayor and council, this is a repair invoice from Matthew's Garage, city employees involved in an accident a couple of months ago, and the repair cost is $5,195.87. We will get reimbursed, we've, from our insurance carrier, unless our deductible, they're going after the other party, so we should get full reimbursement down the road. I recommend approval of this invoice.
Any discussion, if not a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Vehicles, Mr. Reinhardt.
Honorable mayor and council, this is for vehicles for Electric, Stormwater, Public Works, Finance, and Parks and Recreation Department. These departments need vehicles to replace existing vehicles that are being deemed as non, I wouldn't say non-qualified, but that are giving us some issues as far as repairs are concerned. There's nine, total of nine vehicles, we're not forbid, advertised on our website and also GMA's website. Lowest bidder on four of those vehicles were Pioneer Ford, due to the issue with them not completing all the forms, the E-Verify in particular. I had to reject his completely bid. I did talk with the salesman at Pioneer Ford, explained to him what the need was. He assured me that it was oversight. He essentially didn't understand the E-Verify process, I explained that to him, told him where to go. He's, again, told me that he would get the E-Verify information for the next time we had a bid. I wanted to then look at the lowest overall bidder for each individual vehicle purchase, and if that was going to happen, I was going to go, have to go with three different vendors, and then I decided to go ahead and try to piece it all through one vendor. The low bidder is Allen Vigil Ford on all nine vehicles of $249,865. The price, if I was to bid it out with the three vendors, the, we're paying about $854.32 after talking to the garage. There's an issue with additional costs associated with going to two or three vendors in case there's warranty work, so forth and so on. So I am recommending that the bid be awarded to Allen Vigil Ford for all nine vehicles for $249,865. All vehicles are being, are budgeted, they are, all but the electric vehicles are lease pool purchases, and all the, all the E-verified documents are on hand for Allen Vigil.
Okay. Questions, comments, or a motion?
Lease pool.
Motion to accept the bid from Allen Vigil Ford.
What about...
Did you mention lease pool?
Yes, I did mention. Once again, the lease pool is, they're all lease pool except for the electric department.
Need to be part of the motion.
And...
Yes, indeed.
Thank you. So we have a motion that includes that? All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Tom, next item.
And my next item is the auditor's management letter. This is just standard documentation when we're engaging in an audit. It basically spells out the, what they expect from us, what we expect from them, and then discusses the item of payment. We did formally agree to, in the June 19, 2014 council meeting, of a price of $41,500. And again, this is for the mayor's signature. We ran it by council, and council wanted us, legal council, and council, legal council wanted us to run it by council.
Okay. Question, if not a motion?
Is this typical? Like, we would vote on something in June, and then it was, we would find out what we actually, the contract of it?
No, you voted on it. You actually voted on it. All this does is authorize the signature on the letter. When legal looked at it, they said, in order to get the signature on there, you all have to authorize the mayor to do it. That's what they thought ought to happen.
Thank you. Much to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Terry, you've got the next item, please.
Mr. Mayor and council, Ms. McQ Carlson, who is here this evening, approached the Downtown Development Authority several weeks ago about wanting to place a Little Free Library down in Founder's Oak Park in honor of her mother, who's been an active volunteer in our community for many years. In your packet, you'll see the total dimensions of the Little Free Library. It's 25 inches across, 23 inches at the tallest part of the roof, and 17 and 3/4 inches wide. This is something they are placed all over the United States, and you can go online and find the coordinates for where one is located. They would be responsible, obviously, for maintaining this and placing it in Founder's Oak Park pending all utility locations, and would like to keep this up for the community, and they would take full responsibility of maintenance and making sure that, you know, books stay clean and neat in the Little Free Library.
Any questions or discussion?
Things great, make much to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Last item, Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, mayor, council. The city is required to obtain a National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit for discharging stormwater into waters of the state and U.S. because we have been designated as an MS4 community, MS4 Phase II. We're requesting permission for the mayor to sign the notice of intent and our stormwater plan, which are both part of that permit.
Any discussion, if not a motion, it's an order.
Any good motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Tom, anything that needs to come for council this evening? Anyone, anything?
Just want to invite everyone out tomorrow night, our November 1st Friday, giving thanks. We actually have eight nonprofits set up downtown, just highlighting their needs and services, so we want the community to come out and thank them, and possibly give any donations or materials that they might be in need of. And it's also our downtown candlelight shopping event, so lots of great refreshments and treats and great specials for the holiday shopping season.
Great. Did you have an event, was there an event Tuesday night, too?
There was an event. It wasn't a DDA sanctioned, but various businesses came together for around-the-bridge open house. I think there were eight that ended up participating, and it was, it was packed downtown, so...
Very successfully, no parking downtown.
It's a good problem, yeah.
Keep it up. Anything to add?
Yes, sir. Tuesday is Veterans Day, and there's a parade at 10:00 Saturday morning that starts at Frank Moore and goes to the American Legion. There's a program at 11:00 at the American Legion, and I think that's a good time to recognize our veterans and be appreciative of them.
Very good. Of course, Tuesday was election day, we had about a 28% turnout in the city, which was higher than we've had in previous elections. But on that, you know, council did put a referendum on the ballot to get some direction relative to, to our recreation facilities and some improvements that we felt needed to be made and needed a funding mechanism to do it, and so they gave us a very clear direction with 68% of the voters saying yes to that bond issue. We'll have more details about the mechanics of that and what we've got to do to make that happen in coming meetings, but the way that I read it is that, you know, we were looking to get some direction, we got very clear direction from, from the people of Cartersville, so I want to thank them for that, and also thank them for the trust that they've put in us to allow us to handle. I think it's a sign of good leadership throughout this entire city over a great number of years, and so we have been tasked with a responsibility and to do it responsibly, and now we've, now we've got to perform responsibly, and I'm sure we will do exactly that, so. That being said... That being said, Chair, want to take a motion to adjourn?
So move.